The study session, the ones the licenses are going to be, will come to order. Should we just hand it over to, I mean, I didn't, I don't have any agenda beyond what was on here, so.
This study session was called because at several past meetings, authority members have had questions for Sergeant Hampton and the Police Department in general about things like compliance checks and citations for liquor license premises and things like that. So we wanted to give you an opportunity to speak with them face to face. And Commander Ivan has offered to come and discuss some things with you and talk a little bit about how we can more timely get reports and things like that. So one thing that we have been seeing, the admin coordinator up in Investigations has been sending Lena and I reports for every liquor licensed premise, regardless of whether a citation was issued or not. So we have an opportunity to look at them within two, three days of them happening so that we can then make a determination if it's something that we need to bring forward. So you can expect to see things like that much more timely.
So some of the clarity was, we were trying to just get information to basically you guys as quickly as we could. At the time, it was taken, basically, a year, you'd get reports on a yearly basis. A decision was made through a conversation that we were gonna, if an establishment, if there was an involvement, had an establishment that involved their liquor license, we would forward those reports across the way, basically, almost next business day. We weren't gonna, just because they had a liquor license, doesn't mean we're gonna, you don't want every shop looking at King Supers. But if it has something to do with their liquor license, we felt it was a little easier when we do our case assignment to have it sent around the way. And then you guys are getting up to date information when you guys are having clients come back in to look at cases that maybe a bar is up for review or something may have happened just in timeframes of us getting paperwork to you guys, that now you're gonna have things as quickly as possible, as quickly as we're getting them, we'll get them out to you guys.
Thank you for that.
Sure.
I think that's a better course of action. Could you all describe, once it goes from them over to you all, what the process is from there?
So as soon as I get them, Lena and I have a shared drive, because we use Google. So we have a shared Google Drive, so we can look at them. The ones we've had thus far, there haven't been any citations or anything that would lend us to think that there should have been a citation. How we envision the process working, certainly if a citation was issued to either a bartender, an owner, a manager, something like that, it would immediately go on an agenda for discussion. If at any time we see something that maybe there wasn't a citation issue, but we might have a question as to why, then that's something that we can open up a conversation with the Police Department about. So before anything comes to you, you will, all of that information will have been vetted and provided to you.
And what's the process for, if you all determine that something you think should end up on our agenda, does it go directly to us, or is the prosecutor involved at all?
I think at that point, it would depend on what it was. I mean, I know we've talked in the past about if there is a, like, a civil citation done, like, against the bartender, see how that plays out in Muni Court before we bring it to you. So I think it would just depend. I don't know that there's a cookie cutter answer for that.
Well, part of why I'm asking is, you know, the meeting we just had. I'll be frank, one of them, I was not surprised to see a dismissal. I was surprised on the other, which is, you know, this is the process. So I'm not saying that to complain, but I certainly don't, I don't wanna waste everyone's time. And I would, I would like to make sure that, that we're on the same page with you all, you all in the prosecutor's office. So to the extent that, you know, I don't, I don't want us spending time getting licensees spun up and then just have the prosecutors, you know, the prosecutor feel like they're not real cases.
Agreed. And I think that once we do have our new prosecutor on board, that that's probably something that we can involve them in a conversation with as far as process. But in the interim, PD is working with us to make sure that we're getting notifications.
I think one of the things we wanna make sure is that we, when we get with a licensee, the concern has always been in the 20-plus years that Attorney Hampton and I have been doing this, is if we get called to a liquor establishment, we do a bar report. And the concern has been brought to our attention, basically, that if we do a bar report, then automatically, it's going against their license. So we have a tendency for establishments to not call because of the fact that they're more concerned than, hey, because if I don't, if I don't call and it just goes away, but if I get the police here, then it's going against our establishment. Where we've tried to relate to them, and I guess that's what has to be relayed, I guess, from you, is that if they do call and they're, they're doing their due diligence to, I hate to use the word "police," but police their venue and police their patrons, they are a liquor establishment and people are, at some point in time, gonna be over-served. But if they do their due diligence to, basically, stop that process, if that person causes a complaint, they do everything on their part correctly to get that person out, and they call us, that they, they're doing everything right, but they don't wanna be deemed on their, against their liquor license for doing the appropriate things. Where we have establishments that may not call us because their concern is that if we call them, you come, you write a report, and all of a sudden, it's against us. So that's something that I know, when we worked patrol, that it was a concern of the liquor establishments of going, hey, we wanna call them, but every time we call, you guys write a report. And, which we have to do. But I think that's part of the concern of the establishments that we want, and I don't know how that gets vetted through to you guys. Because we want them to call us, we want them to do the right thing, but we don't want that to be used against them when it comes up to any review. And I think that's their concern. And I don't know how that needs to be relayed to either establishments or we need to be able to relay from patrol to patrol, that, yeah, if you call, it's okay. I would rather, honestly, I would rather have 20 reports on a bar who did 20 things right than one or two bars that had 20 things wrong, but when we end up with a bar fight where it spills out to the street and, you know, we're arresting bartenders and patrons and everybody coming in. So I don't know what your guys' opinion is on that. We have tried to, and I don't know what the whole board's thought is of that.
Well, we can, we can go around the room, I mean, I only speak for myself. But, you know, in my time, I feel like we have, we have struck the right balance, you know, during my time on the board. You know, the way I see it, we're, you know, we're here to represent the community and we want businesses to be able to offer a service that patrons want and be successful, which is good for the city. And we want our communities to be safe and prosperous, right? So I think that's, that's, it's, but it's easy to say that. The balance is, you know, the, what matters is how it's carried out. If anything, my thought is, over the last, I don't know, 18 months, I thought we were a little bit in the other direction as far as, I'm sure that there were all kinds of activity going on at bars and, you know, we didn't see a potential violation in over a year, which might be a great thing. I'm not making any accusation that that wasn't, shouldn't have been the case, but I would be surprised if, if that were the case and establishments still thought they were, you know, gonna be held unfairly to task. Because I'm guessing, to your point, I mean, people drink, they get drunk, it's one in the morning, stuff happens, right? Like, so I would spend a lot of time at bars, I wouldn't anymore. But I know it, you know, there was a time in my life when I did. And, and so I'm guessing that there's stuff going on at those bars. So I guess I can, you know, and I'd be happy to open it up to the authority to state their opinion, which is what I think we're here for. But I can say, I definitely think it's a concern of mine and I think we're, I don't think we're on the wrong side of that pendulum, you know, so. Are there other thoughts?
Let me just ask you, give you an example and then ask you a question. So example I have, actually Commander goes directly to what you're talking about. I'm driving down westbound on Littleton Boulevard a couple of months ago, actually, it was about four months ago. It's about 6:15, 6:30 in the evening, and I'm passing the Pyramid Liquor Store. And there's two Pyramid employees, appeared to be employees, shoving a guy out the door and physically shoving him into the parking lot and telling him to get lost. And I expected the next thing that I would see of black and white show up, you know, they would have called the police to say, we've turned this patron away or whatever. Never heard a thing about it. Is that the kind of example that you're seeing where they, they dislodge a patron and don't call you?
Not more from the liquor stores, it's more from the bars, the main bars. I mean, there's 131-plus liquor licenses in the city. We're not going to the mom and pop shops who's, you know, some of them are liquor stores, some of them are 7-Eleven, some of them are King Supers, some of them are the nail salon that lets you drink wine. We're talking mainly the major bars within the city that you guys usually have the most contact with. And that's the ones that we, at times, don't get called on and more being the concern that, hey, if we do call them, we're doing things right, then it makes it look bad. One of the things that may help the process is the facilitation of you guys getting information faster by a change in the way that we're sending the reports over, that you guys are seeing, hey, yeah, there was 15 reports here, but it was all, hey, the bar was trying to do everything the best it can to do it. But I think when that year time lapse was going on, then it's hard to go back and go, hey, somebody tell me what happened on that day, because I really don't know. But I think that has been a concern, and I don't wanna speak for Kevin, but I think that's been a concern. I know that's been a concern as long as I've been here. That liquor staffs try to do their best, but it still feels like they don't wanna call because they're afraid of what's gonna be penalized on the other end. So I don't wanna speak for Kevin, but is that?
Yeah, yeah, we've had this discussion before, that, you know, that's, that's that balancing act that we're all looking at, you know?
Yeah, that gives rise to my question. We've seen a couple of high-volume establishments come in. The View House, the Tavern has always been a high volume. Are you doing more walkthroughs as a result of that? Are you doing more spot checks?
So both Kevin and I have been up in Investigations since we're out of the patrol realm, but I can tell you that patrol does spend a lot of time, especially on the weekends, because they are high-volume areas, that patrol does do a lot of contact with, walking down Main Street, and they're very visible. On Thursday nights, we have an officer that is working at the Tavern off-duty. But patrol officers do, they usually park on one end, walk down every bar, turn around and come back. And, you know, two or three times a night, a lot of them, depending on call, but two or three times a night, they're, they're visible.
And the weather.
And the weather. But it's one of the things that, yeah, I mean, the View House is bringing a substantial amount of business in. But from reports we've seen, it's not a whole, it's not been a whole lot of incidents that occurred that, but the patrol guys are actually going in and making contact, bartenders, managers, those type of things.
To your mind, then, is that proactive strategy working?
Well, I guess, here's the question, I know, I can't, it's trying to, trying to say that the cart come before the horse. I can't say if we'd stopped doing it, if we'd have any more. But I can say that I think that they know, because we are visible downtown, that they, those that are in that close proximics down there, know that we're probably gonna have somebody close by. And so that if there is an event, that they're more likely to get in touch with us because they know we're probably gonna be there within an hour or so anyways. But they do, they do a lot of walkthroughs and contacts to the bars, mainly to the downtown area, which is the highest volume right now.
That's one of the dichotomies of law enforcement, is it's really hard to measure what you prevent. You know, there's no way to measure what we have stopped, you know, just by our presence and that kinda thing. And so, you know, I think, from, from my perspective, reading the reports from our guys, you know, from the guys that are out on the street, I would like to see some kind of a way for all of us to be on the same page in terms of holding some of these establishments feet to the fire when they're, I guess my term would be when they're right on that line. Like, for example, D's Tavern has been a pain in our, our side for a long time. And a lot of the things that we, you know, when we have an opportunity to perhaps cite them for over-serving and we go in and the officers are asking all of the right questions and then the bartenders are saying, well, we don't have it, we don't have a tab, you know? And so one of our, we can't prove how much they've been served because we didn't keep their tab. You know, so things that other, other establishments, the View House is good at that. Some of these, you know, the Tavern is really good at that, you can find someone's tab, you can tell how much they've been served. So those places are cooperating with us and playing the game, even when they're in the wrong. You know, well, yeah, they did have nine drinks, but there's four of them at the table. I couldn't control that she drank eight of them, you know what I mean? Then, then we're on that same page, but when we get this, ah, we don't have it, you know? That, that becomes something that their lack of keeping that record doesn't allow us to do our job. But if there's a way that we can all be on the same page and, you know what I'm saying? It becomes...
If I could, lack of record-keeping is a violation of their license, both in our Muni Code and the State Code. State Code does require that they have records available for inspection at any time. So, I mean, that in and of itself. I think if they knew they could be written up for not giving you a receipt and brought before the Authority for continually not having records.
See, and I think that that then is an opportunity for all of us to learn, because I guarantee you, our patrolmen don't know that.
Okay.
You know, and so if maybe we can have you come in on a training day and talk to these,
We would love to do that.
To these guys about, here are, you know, because I'm telling you, you know, they know traffic, they know, they know criminal law. This bar stuff is not in most of their wheelhouses, you know?
Does that cover individual, I mean, the records portion? Does that cover what they purchased from wholesale?
And what they sell.
And what they sell. But does that cover getting down to that meta-individual transaction and associating that transaction to someone else who pays in cash?
Any, even if they're paying in cash, they need to be running it through some system because they're paying taxes on that.
Right, right, and it goes through that system, but how can you attribute that back to an individual who doesn't give you a name?
They need to figure out a way to do that. It is their responsibility by state law and our Muni Code that they keep...
A description of the purchaser?
It doesn't get that detailed, but it does talk about keeping records and making them available. And if we have someone saying, oh, we don't have a record, that's a violation.
Well, and, and, you know, we just completed a review of, of the code. We made some recommendations that's going to be, you're gonna consider. There is going to go in front of Council. So I would definitely say, if you all feel like there's something that's keeping you from, from,
Doing your job.
Doing your job, again, striking that balance, then I would, you know, I think it'd be great if you all could get with them. And after that conversation, if, if your patrol officer still feel like there's a gap, I think we would definitely like to hear about it. And we could sit back down and have a conversation here and talk about our experience on this side of the table. And if, and if it's the appropriate thing, make a recommendation to Council. Again, I think, you know, that's, that's what we're here for is, you know, on behalf of Council, is to not only do the adjudication, but to the extent that it will become subject matter experts in this process to be communicating back to them. So I would highly encourage if you all still think there are some gaps after you have a conversation with the City Attorney's Office.
If you have establishments that are close to crossing the line, do you, is it the city's practice to pay a visit to the manager or owner of that establishment or call them in, like, talking to the principal and giving them fair warning that they're...
It depends on the, I mean, you look at establishments we've had on the past, down on Rapp Street, where we had to have conversations with the owner on multiple occasions before he came before the board. And we had told him, hey, this guy's on your other line right now. Just, she's drunk, you guys serve them. And so the hard part is, is they're going to, and what, the law is a very, it's very black and white when it's written down. But when you live it, it's neither one. And so when you go, hey, you went to a bar, I went to a bar and I got drunk. Okay, you didn't cause a problem, didn't cause anything, didn't cause disturbance. You know what, I was mad at my wife and I went to the bar and I got drunk and a friend came and got me. Difference of I went to a bar and I got drunk and got in a fight type of thing. But that's the part where it's, it's a balancing act of, when do you go to the owner and go, hey, this guy's been here for five hours and he's been sipping on whiskeys, but he's not causing a problem? We know he's drunk, but he's got a ride coming or a cab coming. And that's where you run into the balancing act of, do we now go after the bar and say, hey, you keep serving this guy even though he's drunk? And that gets, it gets, it gets in the dicey water on how we wanna...
Well, not really, because it's against our code. If he's visibly intoxicated...
And a habitual drunkard.
It's, it's against the law to serve him.
I, I'm sure I completely agree with you.
And I don't see a problem with, I mean, y'all used to do sting operations, send, send a young in to buy alcohol. What about doing a sting operation in a bar like that and bring someone in that's drunk?
It's, there's a lot of responsibility on, now I'm, now I'm placing a person in a position, getting them intoxicated, which is a responsibility now for me, that I'm now responsible for who, a person who I've just allowed to get intoxicated and now I'm dropping them into an establishment. If something happens and they get in a fight...
You're making the attorney very nervous.
But again, what I'm saying is the fact that if the guy's sitting in the bar and he's not causing a problem, the likelihood of an officer going in and citing that bartender, if there's no disturbance, if there's no problems there, is pretty low. If that happens at another bar and somebody's over-served and they're throwing chairs, then yes. Because at what point, I mean, at what point in time are we gonna, is that gray? Again, I understand law is black and white, but we live in a very gray world.
That was my problem with tonight. We had a gentleman that, instead of them calling the police and having him escorted out, they escorted him out, he picked up a machete and...
Samurai sword.
Samurai sword.
Whatever.
Big, no sharp object.
And someone, someone got cut.
New people gotta come.
And... I was disappointed tonight, I really was.
Yeah, but if we look at that case, did a criminal act occur?
Oh, yes.
In the hearing, right? Did a violation of the liquor code take place?
Yes.
It didn't happen enough?
Well, we had, we had evidence where an officer said he had bloodshot eyes, he was, he was visibly intoxicated.
After the fact.
After the fact, but we can't prove that when the guys got there, he didn't drink somewhere.
We didn't have a chance to prove it, though. We didn't need to. You need, we need witness testimony that says, he was, I could tell that guy was drunk and he walked up to the bar and she served him.
And I think we did have that, I believe.
I, I think we did too, but I think, I think we had a couple of things against us on that. I think the amount of time that had lapsed before we got the report and it came to the Authority and the fact that nobody at the bar was cited in any way, shape or form, even though the bartender had made a comment that he had been acting like he was on drugs from the time he got there. And so I think...
And the bartender still served him.
Yes.
Quite a hit.
But I think with our new process, where we're getting reports within a day or two, guaranteed if something were to come up like that... But also, I mean, if we can work with the police to do some more training on that, then maybe that's something we talk to the patrol officers about, like, when you hear these kinda buzzwords or things, when you come to a disturbance at the bar in a situation like that where it's not, hey, we were in the bar and something happened, it's outside of the bar, wherever it is, something happens, these are the buzzwords you hear, then you go to the bartender, you get that bar tab, you ask these questions and you cite them if you feel like you have enough to do that. So that's something that we can work with the officers and training them to, to know the code. I just wanted to loop back to the stuff about the compliance checks. I think that's been more an issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, on personnel, not having the personnel to do that in the Police Department. And I don't know where the Chief is on having that personnel, but that's something we can talk to him about. I don't, I mean, I know that you guys don't have your set team anymore and, so...
I think one of, I think your frustration exactly mirrors our frustration on a daily basis because we both work in Investigations and we see time after time after time cases that we can easily prove, or we believe that we can prove. And we get from the City Attorney or from the District Attorney, a decision not to move forward on this case because, in their words, we don't have a 100% chance of successful prosecution. So the likelihood of successful prosecution is low. Even though we feel all day long, we can, we can prove this, right? That if there's, if there's one wrinkle in the fabric, we get a dismissal letter from them saying, we're not gonna move ahead with this, right? And so I think that this case, exactly the one at the Castle, yeah, I, I believe that we could have probably successfully prosecuted that case. But the boss, the attorney that's gonna prosecute it says, I don't believe so, and we're done, and our hands are tied.
Yeah, I saw it as a slap in the face to you guys.
That's our, that's our everyday, I'm telling you.
I know we need to take away from that, you invited them in to do that training?
Yeah.
Look at the three statutes under those charges, they couldn't prove those three. What if there was others that weren't brought to the table that were a slam dunk? Now the City Attorney's saying, hmm, now the prosecutor's saying, hey, under this charge, yes, we got a case under these three, we don't.
Right.
And that goes back to the training, if you do get that arena, how nice of you guys to do that.
And I think in general, like, we talked about, the training is about providing all of us with all the tools that we need to be able to do a successful job. So I don't know, I didn't talk to the prosecutor, I don't know what her reasoning is, but sticking up for all the lawyers out there, I will say that, I'm guessing that she had a legitimate reason for feeling like there wasn't enough evidence in the case, whatever that was. If we had another case like that in the future, having things like being able to say, you know, we cited the bartender, we, you know, we have, you know, we had that case a while back where they did cite the bartender, bartender went to court, you know, that's a pretty slam dunk, right? You know, if we can start to build those tools for all of us, then I think we'll all be more successful. And to be clear, we are not looking for ways to cite, to cite anyone. We are, we just wanna make sure everyone has... I think we always wanna be successful. If that does come to us, that, that we're doing it the right way. Right, we wanna be sure that we're doing it the right way.
We want bars, we want business in our city. We don't wanna be the Gestapo police that, that walk in and just start hammering people. We want people to be able to come to Littleton and enjoy their time here. If somebody, spouse gets a little bit tipsy at the Tavern or where, I'm not using it, I'm just using the A facility. You know, it's like, okay, let's walk out, we're good to go, we get an Uber and we drive home. That's, that's not what we wanna try to go after and try to diminish in the city. What we wanna try to make sure of, one, is that bars feel comfortable, that if there's a problem in the, in their venue, that they can call us and we will assist them in either getting the person out or doing whatever it is needs to. And then look at the case in its totality and going, is every over-service, and go back to your point, is every over-service a ticket?
No.
No, is every speeder a ticket? No.
Thank you for that.
Is every speeder a ticket? No. Some of it is. Some of it is. Hey, maybe next time, when it says 35, it's, don't mix up the three and another five. It's being 55. Hey, you guys, this cow's wife was a little over the edge, she kind of fell down outside. You guys need to be checking your bartenders, because educate, just like with traffic, education to the bars is just as important, because if we just walk in and start slapping paper, handing them a coupon and says, hey, the city council would be upset with us because we're going to run business out of the city. But if we educate the business owner by going, hey, this one's a little close, you better be careful. But then those times that they do step over the line and we cite them, again, we get frustrated just as much as you guys do, because we're like, seriously? This guy just took out a long steel object that's sharp on both edges and cut somebody in the head and we're not doing anything? Where sometimes the backstory isn't always known. You guys see your police report and you guys don't get all the other pieces, just like sometimes we have to call the officers upstairs and go, there's blanks, can you fill in the blanks? So, we understand why.
Right. And I sort of, I mean, there's two layers of discretion between, you know, what's happening in an establishment and us. I mean, to your point, you have the discretion to use your resources and there, well, I guess there's really three, to the extent that the city attorney's office is going to weigh in, and the prosecutor, and, and that's fine. And I mean, you know, it's a little bit unique, and I think this is why, part of why they call us quasi-idiotical, is that we're not professional judges. We are members of the community, right? By, by nature of being on the board, we're members of the community. So, we, it's not just a job and a profession, we're here to serve the community. But to the extent that when it comes in front of us, the, like, once it's there, the adversarial process plays out, right? But, so I think, you know, as far as, you know, our concerns, I, I think, like I said, I think we all want to make sure that we're striking the right balance between the two. And I, it sounds to me like a little bit more transparency from everyone involved would be helpful, because everyone has their discretion, everyone has scarce resources. We obviously have our own opinion when we gather in the facts and we get to make whatever decision we think is best, but I think some greater transparency probably would be better. So, I'm, I'm definitely, you know, glad you all came in and had the conversation.
And I'll answer you, talking to Kevin, this is the first time we've done one of these. And I would be serious, if we could, if this was done every six months, I think it would really kind of help us get an idea of what we need to help push out to our guys and maybe help going, hey, we just need to have a sit down conversation to make sure we're really, really facilitating what you guys want to do and what your plan is for the city, along with what the case law is and along with the prosecutor is, and open those lines of communication to sit down and go, hey, let's just have a conversation every six months and really kind of understand where each other's coming from, so we can go back to our guys and say, hey, yeah, when you go talk to these establishments, tell them, yeah, we're going to write a report, but that doesn't, it's just information for them. Because to me, looking at it from an outsider's perspective, if, if I got 15 positives and I got an employee and I got one negative, I'm not going to hammer on the negative, the negative's going to be a point, but 15 positives are going to have to come into somewhere and play in my decision-making point on how I deal with that employee. If I got 15 negatives, I'm positive, it's going to be the same thing. But if we can make those guys understand, hey, it's not a bad thing to call us, it's actually in your best interest to call us, so when there is a problem at the establishment... Not saying it, I'm not making any guarantees to anybody, but it could potentially weigh in their favor on what they're doing.
You asked us that question earlier...
What's that?
About, you know, how would we feel better, you know, almost sleep from that night, right? Personally, I would feel better if I knew the establishments called you guys and you used your best judgment. You guys are out there, they're trained, they know what's going on. They'll take your mental notes of how many times have I been here and seen that same face? I love it when you guys get that chance to use your good judgment on the training you've done, know the collaboration with their offices to know the code. But something I always really picked up that you said earlier, how the tavern allows you on Thursday nights to put somebody in there, probably overtime or they pay them, however, whatever.
Call extra duties, right?
And the compliance that you've seen from that establishment overall. So, kind of a general question to our group, when we have these licensees coming before us, are we permitted to ask them a question like, would you be open to working with the police department for an extra duty?
Yeah. Well, I know, well, a little bit of backstory real quick, that didn't, the prior chief didn't...
Allow.
Allow it, because it was seen as a conflict of interest, which I will avoid it, but, but I specifically remember when the tavern was in front of us for the second or third time and that was...
Like within the first year?
Yeah. As you said, we would pay, like down in Denver, we pay, if someone would be here, we would rather, so I think it's a positive development overall. Now, as far as what we can, I mean, do you mean on a violation or when we give them their license?
No, 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 I just mean, hey, have you guys thought about having, similar to what other successful establishments have had in the city, would you consider this model?
So, it's, when they come in as a new licensee, is that when you're talking about?
I mean, I want to show them the success of a well-known...
Depend, and I think, I think part of it would depend on the kind of businesses. I mean, if, if someone's coming in as a, you know, 800 square foot sandwich shop, they're probably not going to have the same need as, as, you know, a view house.
Over that one.
Do you want to use that one?
Over that one.
Thanks, Kevin.
You know, staying within the realm of like what types of questions?
Would you be open to a discussion with the law enforcement division as to other service they provide?
I would just be careful about stepping away from the types of questions that fall in, like a new license question, and, and also be careful about making any suggestions that perhaps doing this would make your success.
That would, that would be my concern is if...
And I think, you know, that's something that, you know, if they come to us with concerns, certain clerk's office can say like, hey, you know, we have other establishments that do this, if they can, you know, talk to our police officers about that.
Well, the worst part is if you make an applicant aware...
Yeah, I, I mean, I would, I would feel entirely comfortable, Bill always used to say, you know, we recommend you have the ruined tips trained. No one, we're not requiring it, I don't think anyone took his comments as a threat, it was a, it's want to be successful. So, I would have no problem with you saying to new applicants during the process, you know, if, when we vote here in a minute, you know, if you're approved, you might want to look into all the possibilities about how you can be successful, including, you know, potential conversation with the police. And I, I would feel entirely comfortable.
Yeah, but something standard that we...
Yeah, I think, I think it would, I think it would depend on how it was approached. You know, saying, you know, would you be open to kind of lead someone to think, well, if I say no, then I might not get approved.
We could phrase it in a context of like, you know, these are some best practices for senior community with the licensees.
And here's other things...
Tips training, open communication with the police department.
Maybe if you do ask them about things like tips training, even though there's no state requirement, there's certainly no local requirement.
I think your points were made, I think it's one of these, they may not even know that it's available for them to, because again, my, my, our past administrations have said they do not want us working in liquor establishments. So, some may not, when they come in, they may be under that understanding of that it doesn't, but, and I'm, I'm not going out and asking for work, but it's one of these things, if they know it's available option to them at some point in time.
Like they don't have to do it. But if it opens another line of communication for you guys to have with us, it's only going to be better for all of us.
Can I circle back to something you said as far as the transparency? And I don't know how this will work, because I don't know that it would be proper for the city's attorney's, city attorney's office to basically dismiss something, but is there a way to, you know, because it sounds like right now, you know, you end up in an establishment and you're going to write a report and then we may or may not see it for a year, right? And we've already talked about that's, that's going to change. But from, but to your point about the establishment's opinion, if I were an establishment, I would, you know, as far as you saying, you know, how do we communicate to them that if you call us, it's better than not? I would rather hear sooner than later, that went through X, Y, Z process and it's not going forward. So, then at least they know and they're not just sitting around and then a year later where their license comes up.
On, on the criminal side?
Well, no, not on the criminal side, as far as what might come in front of us. So, I guess what I'm saying is, is there any way that whatever gets passed from the police to the, to you all, if it doesn't end up with us, is there any way to communicate that back to the licensee? Does that make sense? That we did write a report, it was, it was passed along, but it's not, it didn't go in front of the authority? Licensees might want to know it. Does that make sense? So, 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 for example, I, I'm a licensee, there's a fight in my establishment, I call you all, you come in and, you know, you write up a report because of it, pass it over there, they take a look at it, they did exactly what they were supposed to do, there's, there is no violation, they don't think there's a violation, it never even comes in front of us. I'm saying, how do we communicate that back to the licensee, so they know sooner than a year later their, their license comes up and nothing happens and so therefore they know everything is fine. Does that make sense?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to think about that.
And I realize it might be tough, because you don't necessarily have the authority to dismiss something, but it would be nice to, to have some...
Well, I'm also sort of wondering just about the administration side of that, of having to contact a licensee every time we get a bar report?
Right. And, and this might go back to the same discretion, maybe, maybe we're really talking about a dozen establishments where at the end of the day, I mean, again, the nail salon that serves a glass of wine, probably not really, doesn't keep you all up at night as far as the public sector, right? But there probably are a few that, that if things got out of hand, could become a problem for you all, and it might just behoove you all to check up on those and proactively communicate back to the licensee as a way to say, you know, we did write it up, you know, we sent it along, it came back to us that it's not going in front of the authority, so I just want you to know.
Well, and I don't, I don't want to step on the prosecutor, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but for me as a, as, if, if I was in a different set of shoes, I would, those bar reports that came in, and correct me if I'm wrong, that's, you can throw something at me, I've had many lawyers do it, I would, it would, it would almost be nice if you guys had a copy of those reports, instead of getting them a year, and you can look at those reports and go, they are doing best practice. And you see, you may see six or seven reports in two months and you read them and go, yeah, they really are doing best practice, which helps, I think, helps educate you guys to a point, not, not trying to be disparaging, but helps educate you guys to a point of, hey, the next time they come up for something, you know, but if you see, you know, something over time, I think it's, I mean, if I'm you, I'd rather have all the reports that come in.
If we saw all the reports that you guys saw, would that affect our objectivity?
It might, because you have, you have to remember that even though you may, let's say we have an establishment that maybe has a report or two every month, because they're doing the right thing, even though it does look like someone's getting over served a couple of times a month, but they're doing the right thing, let's say six months from now, we have a report and things went completely pear shaped and now there is a citation and they're in front of you, you have to remember that other reports, whether or not you have weighed in on them in the past, can be used as mitigating or, you know, you can, you can use some of that past information, not just past violations.
I, I completely understand what you're saying. I would, I would feel less comfortable getting everything, I'm just saying, I would like a way to communicate back to a licensee.
How about this?
Whatever determination is made that it doesn't end up in front of us, whatever that is made, it would, it would be nice if there was a way to communicate it back to a licensee, if you all, in your discretion, felt like it would be helpful in their relationship.
Yeah, I don't think it should be coming from our offices.
Yeah, I think it's difficult from our office, to be honest with you.
And if we can't understand your, I understand your point. But I, I was just trying to say to, to, to provide greater feedback faster to the licensees, so that as you all try to bring them along to this idea that we want, we want you to call us, it would be nice. And if we can't do it, we can't do it.
And that may happen just naturally with the new processes as we move forward in that people are, licensees are finding that they're not being called forward a year later as they start to see that change.
It might just be a natural progression.
It might just take longer than immediate gratification.
Current process, your office sees the report on a bar report, right?
On what?
At the bar report, right?
Well, yeah.
If there was a call for service at a location and there's no bar report, there's no report to you.
Right. Right.
Allow me to go in a different direction, based on something Mr. Shaw asked earlier. Would you consider, prom season's coming up, in three months will be a prom season, would you consider a pilot 30-day program to go out and do liquor store enforcement checks or 7-Eleven enforcement checks, just in the Heritage and Littleton High School attendance areas for a couple of weekends, just to get the word out that you were actually looking at kids buying underage?
We're not, I'm not opposed to that. There's been some legality issues that have come from those and I would have to research those a little bit further before we go back. We had stopped those for a period of time, and so we just would need to make sure and work with the prosecutor, make sure that we're, the city attorney's office, to make sure that we're in compliance legally with doing what, doing that, and then making sure our administration, you know, this is going to literally come from Chief Stevens on authorization for that.
I would think if you just did it for two weekends and then had the SRO in each school spread the word that here's what the outcome of those searches were, that those checks were, we might knock down a problem, keep it from starting.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree with you, and trying to get out in front of it, this sad part about the prom parties is it's usually not the kids that are buying the liquor.
It's parents.
It's their brothers and sisters, or neighbors, or their mom and dad went away and they didn't know how much liquor they had, and the kids did, and the kids have been taking liquor from there. But I, I'm not, I'm not discounting anything and I'd be happy to, we'll be happy to look at it and see...
What are patrol officers seeing in traffic stops? What are they seeing when they're stopping an 16 to 18-year-old who's a Littleton or Heritage student on a Friday or Saturday night? What are they, what's the experience they're telling you?
What are they seeing?
Yeah. Are they finding beer? Are they finding alcohol? Are they finding edibles? What are they finding?
Honestly, I think our, the biggest danger to our kids right now is texting, more than, than alcohol. You know, we see so much of that, that it's, it's really frustrating from an enforcement standpoint, you know? Mike and I both worked traffic, you know, in our careers and spent all, you know, and when you get in a market police car drives down the road, can't find a single thing, get in a personal car to drive home and there's nine people almost run into us because they're texting, you know? So, I, we have not seen, we have not had a minor in possession, alcohol or drug ticket in, I don't even know how long.
Uber.
It's Uber. Yeah, I think that's a big part of it.
And I think their kids are getting smarter, because the hard part is, is like you go to the marijuana piece with the edibles. I can tell you, I've seen gummy bears and I've seen edible gummy bears and I can't tell the difference. And the kids are knowing that, and the kids, it's, it's like we, when we send the canines out to the high schools. The kids know a couple of days before that we're coming, they, most of the time, the smart ones get rid of what they need to. And the kids are knowing that we're coming to those end of the year parties, that officers are really looking for that type of stuff. They've gotten smarter, where they're doing it, the houses they're going to, the parties they're showing up at. There's that one occasion where you get somebody who didn't get the memo, but...
Texts.
They'd read their texts, yeah.
Yeah, and a lot of the information that we're, that we're getting, and I hate to use the word responsible in this context, but the, the parents are being responsible in that we know that kids are having parties after prom and they're at somebody's house and mom and dad have condoned it, but they don't let anybody leave, you know? And so, we get a lot of those. Everybody's going to Steve's house, we know they're drinking, but Steve's mom didn't, won't let anybody leave until the next morning, you know? So, the feel-good parent, you know, that is everybody's friend, we, we know that that's happening in their homes, but we also know that they're spending the night and, and nobody's leaving the house.
And our patrol sergeants know that when we go to these, basically these kid parties, it's, if you were fast enough to run and you were getting there, that if they've been drinking, their parents are being called and you're getting, you're walking out with a ticket. And we, they know prom time, homecoming time, that those patrol officers usually step those enforcements up where you, you're going to be writing tickets for a while, because you may have 40 or 50 when you leave a, a big party. And there's a lot of parents that are going to be upset because you're coming to get their kiddo, they're having to come at 2:00 in the morning to get their kiddo. So, patrolmen do a, a really good job when it comes to kids, because I think a lot of them value that piece, because they know that the next, next time could be that DUI. them value that piece, because they know that the next, next time could be that DUI of this kid getting in a car and driving, and then you give them a beer or two, and then hand them one of these things, it's going to be a tragedy. I mean, we've had several of them, I mean, we've had a couple of Heritage kids that had tragedies with either phones or drinking or alcohol, so our officers know the severity of it, and they, they try to do their best to get in those parties and do their stuff, so. But I'll make her, liquor, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Allow me to go in another direction.
Sure.
Do you guys get the non-compliance reports from the marijuana enforcement division?
From the state marijuana?
From the state?
No.
Why? Or why not?
That's a great question.
Yeah. If they were to cite one of the four, we have four dispensaries.
We have four.
They were to cite one of them, do they then tell the local authorities that this
The local authority is the clerk's office, and I've only received one.
But it doesn't go upstairs?
It's not a police issue.
Yeah, it's usually something
It's a licensing issue.
It's an administrative licensing issue, and it's usually just the state letting us know what the violation was and what the consequence was.
Should the department know, as, could be the tip of the iceberg?
Well, possibly, and that's something we can talk about, the only one I have seen actually had to do, it had nothing to do with sale or anything like that, it actually had to do with packaging, so, you know, so I don't know how much that's going to impact.
Yeah, and I think that the marijuana industry is, it's, these guys know it's a livelihood for them, and they're, they're making a lot of money out of it, and if they, you know, if, like the recent ones that happened in Denver, where you step in and you take out their business, depending on who the ownership is and those type of things, it's, these guys know that these compliance checks are going to come, and they're, they're pretty on the ball with that, there's, you're going to have, and, you know, we have such a small amount, if you're in Denver, and where you see those big compliance issues, or Denver and Aurora usually, it's not anything other than they have just so many outlets to get that stuff.
What's the difference?
And, and that's, that's the one that I got, was actually, we do, they have a license here, but their violation was at a Denver location, so it really had nothing to do with any of that.
Our licensee that we have are medicinal only.
Yes.
Versus the Denver ones are
Yes.
Very different, very different set of
The Inglewood want to cross our line, you know, there's lines out the door, it's everywhere.
Those ones are really heavily regulated, it's the legal grounds that you got to worry about, I suspect, I mean, they
There's a lot of
Check are pretty heavy.
Blow your nose.
I'll, I'll take your personal opinion informed by your professional experience on what we might expect to see once full-strength beer is everywhere. This year, every gas station, every three-two license holder will transition to a full-strength beer license. Do you, from my personal experience, every time I'm in a three-two store, gas station or grocery store, I don't see anyone buying beer at all, but I've gone to Costco in Park Meadows now that they've got wine there, and everyone's basket has wine in it. I imagine once King Supers at Broadway Mineral start selling regular-strength beer, that people will have beer in their carts again. I, I know we have some institutional knowledge with Safeway, because they have a license. Do we think, with all the gas stations and all the grocery stores coming into real full-strength beer, that anything significant will change, will there be more loitering, will there be more issues?
I don't, I don't, from my opinion, I don't think so, I mean, just, again, based on our one asset test, the Safeway, I mean, Safeway's really been an known issue for us, so I, I, I don't think so, quite frankly, so.
Yeah, I think if anything, and I hate to be, you know, I'll be the other side, I think if anything is going to bring up tax revenue, because you, you can literally walk into a King Supers and say, and it's like, okay, now I got to run around the corner, grab a beer, forget it, I'm, I'm not going to do it, now it's right there and it's going to bring in, but I don't foresee any increase in, in issues, to be honest with you, it's, it's there, it's already been there, and I think, you know, if you need to run in and get a six-pack real fast, it's going to be, it's as convenient to go to seven-elevens as going to a liquor store. I guess liquor store might be a little concerned about it, but
Yeah. Any other questions? Well, you guys are doing this. Yeah, I really appreciate you coming in, so
And then we're certainly happy to schedule another one in six months or so.
Yeah, why don't we just plan on six months from now, getting back together.
And I think the commander's idea about having you guys do an in-service training for patrol
We're certainly happy to do that.
Would really help them too.
Yeah, and we, we literally were sitting in my office just before we came down here, and we're looking at numbers, and we're like, wow, we're, not saying we're different, but we're a young department, those of us that are older are usually promoted up through the ranks a little bit, and we're not as, I mean, we're just at a different place in New York, and so we have a lot of young officers that are on the street that do a lot of good work, and when we started, liquor was, I mean, we had a notebook that we carried around with us, and we walked in and looked at liquor licenses, and we were standing behind bars, checking for flies and checking for stuff, and those kind of things aren't, aren't done regularly today, like they were back then, but some of it is to, what legal grounds do they really have to stand on? Because, I mean, the legality of liquor and things change and stuff like that, guys don't want to, I mean, it's a big deal when you start writing these tickets, because you don't want to look foolish, you want to the prosecution, and you don't want to go out and look like you're going after somebody that doesn't need it. So I think the training for a lot of these young guys would do a lot, and maybe just a refresher for some of the guys, these guys do great work every day, and it's just sometimes, you know, you need a little, hey, quick on fifty-five and a thirty-five type deal.
Great.
Thank you, guys, thank you for letting us come in, appreciate it.
All right, this study session is adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.